Good evening, we'll call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Will you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Present.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Ratner? Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Mr. Stefano? You have a quorum?
Thank you.
In accordance, excuse me, in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 11th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject matters: Matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now be in closed session, and we should be out by 7:15. Thank you. We're back in the public session. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I would like to let the public know that we did have a email received from Ms. Spearman with her resignation to the Board of Education. That was received on Wednesday, August 9th. And I will read the email, it was very brief. Dear President Skirby and fellow Board members, this email represents my official notice of resignation from my board position with the Monroe Township Board of Education effective immediately. I regretfully announce this decision due to personnel, personal reasons. It has been a great pleasure to be alongside the individuals on the board, past and present, as well as district administration, staff, students, and community members, and I will always appreciate the experience and knowledge I gained during this time. Sincerely, Karen. So, in accordance with our district policy, when we do have a vacancy in the role of Vice President, we are required within 30 days to fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. So, therefore, at this time, I will open up nominations for Board Vice President. Ms. Spearman, I mean, Ms. Belko?
First.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the resignation, or accept the resignation.
Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Regretfully, yes.
Ms. Bora?
Regretfully, yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Regretfully, yes.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up the floor for nominations. Ms. Belko, you had your hand up?
I'd like to nominate Giselle Bora for the position of Vice President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there... Ms. Fabiano?
I'd like to nominate Yale DePain.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Gagliardi, we do a roll call, I just want to do this correct. We do a roll call, and each one in the order.
So... Sometimes, boards will do a roll call for each candidate. More often than not, however, boards will simply go through the roll and have each person vote for their, the candidate of the two nominated that they choose. I happen to think the second makes more sense, but the board has discretion to do it either way. I recommend the second of those two.
I think our policy states each one, right? Each, no, we didn't change the policy.
We didn't change it because it was...
But we have, we have typically done each, each person nominated with a roll call. That's what we did at the beginning of the year. So, we could do, we could follow that.
I mean, yes, you can, you can do either one. They're both lawful.
Unless there's a majority opposition to doing it, picking only one.
I think, wasn't the picking one option when it was silent, where you wrote it down?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So... We'll follow what we did, we'll follow what we did at the reorg meeting, and we'll have a roll call for each nomination. Ms. Allen?
Okay.
This would be, if you want to read it, this would be a vote for...
For Ms. Bora? So, it would be Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Four yeses and three nos. Okay, and then for Ms. DePain? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
No.
Ms. Bora?
No.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
No. Okay, so you have three yeses. Sorry, I'm sorry. Three yeses and four nos. So, it would, Ms. Bora would be nominated as Vice President.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Bora, if you want to come take your seat up here? Turn the hot seat.
Can I say something about Ms. Spearman?
One second. So, also, in accordance with our policy, the Board of Education has a duty to fill the vacancy of the board seat. That needs to be filled within 65 days of the notice of the resignation, and that would bring us to Friday, October 13th. The Board Secretary will be advertising the open position that will be put out on our, on our website. And I guess, where else will that be advertised?
The two newspapers.
The two newspapers.
Yeah.
The same as our meeting notices? We'll, we'll follow the same procedures for our meeting notices to, to advertise that position out. When the resumes come in, then we will, as a board, look at those, and we will conduct interviews and elect a, or appoint a Board of Education member to fill the vacancy. So, the next item on our agenda...
Can I just say something about Ms. Spearman, or no?
Can we do that aboard business?
Another board business.
Another board business? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have the Public Board of Education meeting minutes from July 19th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next one is our closed session meeting, July 19th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, Ms. Fabiano abstains. All right, our next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Is there any committee wishing to give a report this evening? Ms. Belko?
I have two committee reports to give this evening. The first one I'll give will be the Curriculum Committee. This was another lively discussion, a lively meeting. Please, if you haven't already gone out and seen the, the video of the meeting, please do so. It was a packed agenda, and we did, we did our discussion items first. We talked about the online ticketing program and the Go something, and I forget the, the name, to be honest with you, because I moved that paper. Thank you. GoFan was presented, it was presented at both the Curriculum Committee and at the Finance Committee. So, the paper for that is in the finance notes. So, it's a ticketing program that they, they want to use for sports, to, for people to purchase the tickets online, as opposed to reduce, and also trying to reduce the amount of cash flow, that is, you know, actual cash that is out there, and to get tickets purchased. We'll also be able to use it not just for football, but for performing arts items and for other agenda, other programs that are out in the, in the district. And there'll be, there would be a link on the website and different things. There was some discussion about it, and there was some continued discussion in finance, which, you know, is on the agenda for tonight for board approval, for that. There was also discussion about permitting sixth grade wrestling to happen at the middle school, and there was some good discussion about that, and being able to, that would allow us to have to not forfeit those lower weight classes because we only have the sixth and eighth, the seventh and eighth graders, which are, you know, a little bit, that weight class, the 60 and 70 pound weight classes, which I guess at that age, that's the weight class. We tend to forfeit those, which then makes us lose matches. So, we're trying to, you know, go Falcons, we want to win. So, they want to have that. So, that was a discussion. There was a discussion about the intermediate cheer program, which would be another level competition team for the high school. There is, there is room in the budget for this, and there, so this program will, I think it's on the agenda for tonight. The volunteer coach, there's some other things that are on there. So, that's on the agenda for tonight. Then there was summer programming. We moved to the, to the end of the year. Then we had some testing discussions about the testing, the final testing and the grades and the finals, and that is also policy review for first read for tonight, to reduce the final grades to the final things. We had a lot of curriculum discussion. It was also on the Policy Committee discussion. So, it was a lot of good, by-committee, you know, stuff. And I know that my colleague, Ms. Alvarez, is going to talk about that in her report. We also had, trying to think, okay, we got that. The curriculum documents that we reviewed, and I'm just going to quickly list them out. They are on the agenda for tonight for approval, is the Pre AP 2, which we did a Pre AP last month, French 2, Honors, French 2, and Elementary Grade 1 and Grade 4 ELA, and then different, there was some good discussion about that. The materials are standard, the content maintained within the Jersey standards, and content and the skills. Some really interesting talk about making sure we bring back cursive writing, which several of us were kind of excited about that because it's not been, you know, it's not been highly taught, and it would be nice to be able to do that. So, that's my curriculum document, curriculum discussion.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko? Want to do your other committee report?
Sure. I will now do the Finance Committee. I will not do it the same service as my colleague, Ms. Spearman, did, but I will do my best to present the information. So, the bills that are on the agenda for tonight are for us to approve. There was, and you'll see this also on the video, but there was a total of $23,000 in attorney fees, and then the bill list was reviewed. There was no outstanding things on the bill list, so that's up for review tonight. We did receive a budget update, and there's some work already happening with the budget, trying to clear things up. We also, there was no update for the audit, the new auditor team. They, they're just getting ready, they're just finishing out last year, getting ready to start with this year. That will, that process will begin very shortly. And then, we did have a good discussion, again, about the ways, other ways, ways, excuse me, to raise funds, different private revenue streams and different things that we're looking at as a district, increasing some of the signage, stuff that we did, things like the signage, maybe doing, you know, announcements at these events and different things. Really good talk about that. And Mr. DePain actually brought up some good things about leveraging more funds for different things and more revenue streams, buses, things like that. Lots of lively discussion, again, on that. And we didn't, we did also, again, discuss the GoFan piece. And although the software itself is not going to cost the district any out-of-pocket expenses, I myself did bring up some, you know, interesting, nothing's for free, right? So, there's no out-of-pocket costs for the software, but I, you know, there are costs for, you know, there are time and energy that we have to put into it and the things that we need to do. There were some concerns that were brought back to the, to the IT folks. And Mr. Feldman, Ms. Chanley let the rest of the board know, we, there's no issues. The workload is not going to be that difficult. There were some other discussions about how else we could use that program in the district for other things that we are doing. So, that is my report to Natchal.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko? Yes, Ms. Bora?
I have a comment on the curriculum. Can I still make it? I don't even know where I... There's been a lot of chatter post-curriculum meeting, and I know Ms. Belko always starts by saying, please watch the meeting. There has been a lot of chatter and misinformation about the policy change that we are making and everything else that we discussed that day, and it's based off of hearsay. I just wanted to encourage parents to go see the curriculum meeting and understand that this is just the beginning of a conversation. The first step we are taking is trying to, it's, it's really a quick, low-hanging fruit for us that we can reduce from 16% to 12% and have an immediate impact. There is going to be more detailed look at this. Our administrators have promised us, Dr. Higgins was in the meeting, and he said he will be having more holistic conversations with the teachers to see how we are working with our students through the year, not just the final exams. Why are the final exams harder than, if it's an A student throughout the year? What exactly is happening between those marking period assessments and the final exam? How can we prepare our students better? How can we prepare every student for success? So, it's just the beginning of a conversation. Please don't go on hearsay, listen to the curriculum meeting, and then send your questions directly to the board members or the administration, and get your facts from there. I would urge everybody to get the facts directly from the administration. Thank you so much.
Ms. DePain?
Yeah, I, that curriculum meeting was fantastic. I just had a couple of comments, and I don't think it was brought up, and they're very simple comments about the children that are taking the AP classes and then getting 70s on the finals. You don't know what's going on with that child that day at the final. Okay, you don't know what's going on in their home, if they're not feeling well. And I think that has a lot to do with children, you know, with, if pressure is on them at home to get A's, straight A's, or something like that. I noticed it wasn't mentioned, and they're simple things. They panicked, you know, like anybody else can. Some people can get in that day and have a bad headache, everybody's sick. Some people aren't good test takers, if you're freshmen or you're sophomore in AP. And you can cumulatively all year get an A+, but that test comes and you're like, oh, boy. You know, you're timed, and, and some anxiety can come out. And I just think that's separate things that the children are going through that maybe, I don't know if parents are putting on them, or they're putting on themselves. But I just wanted to add to the discussion that night because I didn't hear it, and it was just simple things that could happen to children the day of the test. So, just wanted to give them a little credit for doing so good all year and maybe just having a bad day, so.
I would agree with that. However, when we're presented with information that 2,300 final exams were failed, it seems like there's some sort of an issue that needs to be looked at. And I'm glad Dr. Higgins was here and did agree that that is a very large number. It was about 17%, I think, of the final exams that were taken were failed. So, I'm, I'm happy that the administration and the high school is looking into it to see what grade levels that was and what courses specifically, and, you know, trying to figure that out. Because you're right, kids do have bad days, absolutely. But when you have a number like that, 2,300 failed final exams, there, it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be investigated. Yes, Ms. Scott?
That's why I was going to say that I would like to see more reports on data, whether it's at the curriculum meeting or presentations during, I would prefer to the full board presentations specifically on data. I want to see data on where certain grade levels are doing in their math, in, you know, in language arts, et cetera. See the data, see the proof in front of us, in front of the public.
Absolutely.
And that we, we can start to visualize and see more of exactly what is going on, especially at the high school level.
Ms. Belko?
So, again, we did discuss this in length at the meeting, and I do want to thank, I want to publicly thank Dr. Higgins, Dr. Kevin Higgins, for presenting to us the information that he did and for being open to our incessant questioning and our, you know, our request of him to give us that data, because data is key, and what gets monitored gets done. And I understand Dr. Lehman has a presentation for us coming next month. He's working on some data presentations, and we are going to be vigilant, at least I know I am, for the next seven, eight, nine months, whatever it's going to be, going to be, you know, holding their feet to the fire about this data, and because that's how we'll improve the district, that's how we'll look and see where do we need to make steps. And I think that this meeting was a, you know, which is why the Curriculum Committee meeting is the longest scheduled meeting on the calendar. And now that I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, I can start that meeting a little later if I have to, but I'll try not to. So, Dr. Lehman just went, oh, no. But it's, we do have those hard discussions, and we did have some really tough discussions in the meeting, and, you know, and that's what, that's what the committee meetings are for. So, I really, again, implore the public to watch those videos. We tape those meetings for that reason. You can rewind them, you can look at them, you go, what did they say? Because it is a lot to absorb. And I go back and look at them because sometimes I'm like, oh, yeah, we said that. So, it's, you know, it's important, it's imperative. So, I appreciate everybody's comments on the Curriculum Committee.
Ms. Fabiano?
I don't have a comment, I've, next to reports.
Committee report?
So, I have two committee reports also. So, the first one I have is the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee. We met on Wednesday, August 9th. The first item on our agenda was the letter-writing campaign, and we shared a draft that the committee composed. However, it was a little long, so we discussed various changes that we would like to make, and the committee will have a draft completed by the September meeting that we'll share it at the committee, and then we'll bring it to the full board for approval, and then we'll hopefully get it up on the website so we can start the campaign. The next item on our agenda was planning a trip to attend the budget hearings that usually start early in the year, so early 2024. We discussed possibly getting a bus and partnering with the council to encourage residents to attend the hearing. We brainstormed some ideas as to how we can engage the community in this process, and we'll continue to discuss at our next meeting. And lastly, we discussed our board goal for the committee. We discussed how we would like to continue engaging the community, creating a letter-writing campaign to seek support for our district, and as a committee, stay informed of all pending legislation that may directly affect our district.
Right, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Fabiano?
And you have another committee report, right?
Yes, the next committee report I have is the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee. This is a very long meeting. I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. So, the first item on the agenda was centered around the Golf Range Clubhouse. It was discussed that it will be looked at to determine the cost to convert it to usable space for people personnel services, is that correct? And parking for buses. Mr. Teague said that renovating can be done in-house, and the project will save the district money by not having to renew the costly lease at Monroe Commons. Next on the agenda was the TV studio broadcast server. The cost for the server is $35,000. District Administration will be, what we talked about, asking the township to cover the cost of the server since the district pays for the employee that manages it. The committee also discussed putting a survey out to the community to try and gauge how many residents are using the channel. Next, Mr. Teague discussed the annual integrated pest management program. The plan is adequate. We also discussed the sign at the high school. It is currently off, but the part that is needed was ordered. The sign does need some weatherproofing at a cost of about 1,850 dollars versus buying a new sign at nearly 40,000. We were like, just weatherproof it, it'll be just fine. We also discussed the middle school PAC HVAC project. Mr. Teague said that they are very happy with the state of the project and the progress that they are making, and that the HVAC will be ready for the start of school. Mr. Teague also shared with us the IAQ Plan, which is the Indoor Air Quality Plan. Applegarth needs to have its windows open due to a buildup of carbon dioxide, dioxide. Mr. Teague mentioned the need for air quality coordinators in each building, which would be a stipend position. Mrs. Chanley said that she would discuss this, possibly bring it to the MTEA. The snow removal, no snow. Snow removal contract is going out to bid, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is no snow, no money is paid out. And the last item for discussion, this is a long-awaited discussion and a very lengthy one, was on full-day kindergarten. I would encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity, to please watch the recording for the full discussion because I'm just kind of condensing it down. But we talked about space, the use of what is currently the ECE Building, which is the Early Childhood Enrichment Building next to Mill Lake School, the cost of adding approximately 14 teachers and possibly adding a second question to the April ballot. The committee noted that all of its members are in support of having a full-day program, but there are a lot of logistical and financial components in order to make it happen. That's my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fabiano? Mr. DePain?
I don't have a question, I have a comment on the first committee, if you don't mind, I missed it.
Sure.
I was assigned, or I spoke up and said I would ask, I called Nancy, who's the new Director of the Senior Center, with our letter that comes out. She said she would be, would be no problem for her to email blast all the seniors that belong to the Senior Center, our letter to send up to the legislators. We can also put in their newsletter, which goes out once a month. We have to get whatever we want in it the month before. So, if we have any plays, concerts, sports, or anything coming up, she'd be glad to put a space on the senior newsletter that goes out to the township, all about our school. She said she'd be honored. And I also asked for Mr. Schneider if we could bring chorus and maybe a jazz band or something for the holidays, and she said definitely. So, I'm going to, I have to get Yale's phone number. I'm going to give it to her. I have a meeting on the 9th with that committee, and she said definitely. We will love to set up something. Our seniors would love to see that. So, she was very amenable to anything that we wanted to bring to her. So, that was something that we discussed that night, too, so.
That's great, thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Bora?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Belko?
Back to building the grounds. The TV channel usage, instead of sending out another township survey to people, can we just get a usage report from the TV people in the server?
The answer is absolutely yes, and we are in the process of doing that. The individual who oversees all that and will be able to provide the information is actually on vacation, like a real person, right? But that's already in the works. So, we've asked for the TV usage. We want it also, anything that they also, if we're not asking a specific question, anything that would provide more information about the usage, to also provide us with that. So, we should get that by Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday? I believe the person's coming back on Monday or Tuesday.
Yes, Ms. Bora?
Done. Again, on BGT, it's not related to the agenda, but I wanted to give a shout out to our facility staff for the amount of work that's gone on this summer, and a special shout out for the collaboration with Fire District 2, Engine 35, for helping with the flat pole in one of our elementary schools that saved us money, and they volunteered to do it, and I think that deserves a shout out, you know. Because, of course, Mr. Teague and his collaboration, but it's great to see the town and the school work together and it ends up saving us tax dollars, all of us. So, I just wanted to give that shout out. And if nobody else has, I can go into personnel.
Sure.
So, the Personnel Committee met on August 9th. The board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Stefano, and Mrs. Gerby. The administrators in attendance were Dr. Lehman and Mrs. Chanley. We reviewed the current openings in the district. At the time of the meeting, we had 69 vacancies, 34 due to resignations, nine due to retirement, 10 due to transfer, 15 due to leave, and one is a new position. I would like to mention that the leave replacements from the previous school year come on during summer as a new vacancy and have to go through the approval process again before school starts. At the time of the meeting, 33 positions were already filled pending board approval, and the district was actively interviewing for other positions, and some of those are on the agenda tonight for approval. I want to add that this evening at 5:30, as I was eating my dinner, I want to add that this evening at 5:30, as I was eating my dinner, I saw an email that came at 2:30 from, from Mrs. Taglifero, which amendments to the agenda, and we all, board members go through it often, where there are last minute additions to the board agenda, and it baffles us and it stresses us, because we want to make sure we're doing a due diligence. But I have to tell you, there were more approvals, and some that made me jump for joy, because, like I said, there were thirty-three positions that were already approved when the personnel met last week, but we, I still walked out of that meeting feeling that we are still in need of teachers in high school and middle school, and going into a new school year, those vacancies don't feel good. And this afternoon, lo and behold, we had several more of those positions, biology teacher, math teacher, more security officers, increase in hours of bus drivers, all of that in approval on the agenda tonight. So, the administration is really working hard to start the year strong, and I want to commend their efforts for it. During the meeting, Mrs. Chanley shared that after the unsuccessful first attempt, the administration had boasted the opening for the supervisor of special ed one more time, and the outcome this time around was what we had hoped for. There were eighty new applications this time. Twelve matched our requirements and were interviewed. Three candidates advanced to the final round, and the committee is happy to recommend the most qualified candidate for this position for approval by the full board tonight. Mrs. Chanley also shared that the vacant position of vice principal, they received ninety-four applications for it. Twenty-five were interviewed for the first round, ten made it to the second round, and three of those made to the final round. The committee is happy to bring the administration's recommendation for approval by the full board tonight. This individual is approved, if approved tonight, will be shared in this role as vice principal by Brookside School and Applegarth School. The committee also discussed and approved the recommendation for our new full-time night shift armed security guard. This was a resignation replacement and not a new position. We had four responses to our exit survey. Reasons cited were retirement, accepted positions closer to home, and then accepted position in another district. There was a discussion on the rate of pay for substitute drivers. Monroe School District does not have any set rate for this as of today. It was unanimously agreed that our rates need to be competitive, as we are currently, like most other districts in the state and country, seeing a very high rate of attrition in bus drivers. It is a major concern of the district administration and the Board of Education. The Personnel Committee has proposed establishing $1.25 per hour as a rate of pay for substitute drivers in the district, which is up for approval in the agenda tonight. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bor?
I have the Policy Committee report.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez.
The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, August eighth. There were two policies and three regulations on the agenda for discussion. Legislation signed on July third, 2023 revised two sick leave statute sections that address sick leave for school district employees. These revisions became effective on July third and required the development of a new policy and regulation guides 164.02 to address these new provisions. The committee reviewed the regulations and selected options in accordance with the current MTEA contract. Additionally, the New Jersey Department of Education Guidance for School Threat Assessment Teams was published on July nineteenth, 2023, to be effective September one, 2023. This required revision to policy guide 2419 and development of a new regulation guide 2419. The revision includes new language defining the structure and scope of the threat assessment team and its role when becoming aware of allegations of HIB and/or a bias-related act. Additionally, language was added that mandates each member of the team to attend training coordinated with the NJ DOE and the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. And then the last discussion was the regulation number 2624, the grading system. Dr. Higgins and his team have been reviewing the current regulation regarding how final exams are weighted, and is recommending that the weights be adjusted. Therefore, each marking period weight will be raised from twenty-one percent to twenty-two percent, and the weight of the final exam will be reduced from sixteen percent to twelve percent. The committee is also recommending that section C, number two, be modified so that parents receive notice of their child's midterm grade at the midpoint of the marking period via a district communication other than Genesis for high school students. That concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Okay, and that concludes our committee reports. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. This is for agenda items only. If anybody is wishing to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Radhik Nello, Monroe Township. First of all, congratulations to Gazala, and it is sad to leave, see Ms. Beerman resign. So, I heard, watched the videos, watched the videos of committee meetings, every time I asked the same thing, but this time, they are not uploaded to the PEG website. They are still on our Board of Education website, but they are not uploaded to the PEG website, and there is no communication about that, why it was there and why it is not in PEG. The second one, the GoFan, using the GoFan for purchase of tickets. Even though we don't have any upfront costs, what is the impact on our revenue? Like, are we sharing any revenue with them? Is there any per ticket cost? Are there any costs to the buyers, like, or my school bus, like 2.5% or 3% when we are using rate card or anything? That's my one of the question. The other question is, suppose there is an example that if a student is like A all through the, regarding the weightage of the final year, right, final exams? So, even though if the kid is like all through the year, like he's an A person, A plus candidate, and then if he flunked the final exam, what is the point, right? So, even if it is like sixteen percent stay set, there is eighty-four percent of the score that he can gain throughout the school year. Even though if he's a B+, he is getting eighty percent of that eighty-four percent, which is like sixty-nine point two precisely. So, is the pass mark of the high school is sixty-five percent, if I remember correctly, so he should be passed at that grade, even though he failed the final exam. And not just reducing the weightage, but I want to consider what are all the other factors that is causing these final exam failures for 2,300 people? So, that's my, the last one.
Thank you. The first question that you had had about the committee meetings being posted, the committee meetings are always posted on the website. I believe the staff member who would upload those to the PEG channel is on vacation, and that's probably why that was not. But they are on, they are posted, they are on the, they're on the website.
They are posted on the BOE website, I agree to that, but there should be some communication or like, because everybody goes there, like, because it's, we are habituated to see that there, and it's not posted there, then I have to figure out like where it is, where it is, and then I figured it out. So, at least like if a person is not available, we should have some backup for somebody to post it there.
Understood, but, but just so you know, they, they are posted to the website, and they are accessible. It says, on the website, it says videotaped committee meetings. It has it separate from the board meetings, videotape board meetings. If you click that, it pulls all of the committee meetings up. So, we did do, the district did do its due diligence to ensure that those were posted to the website in the future. I guess we could look at. I already have. As far as GoFan, Dr. Lehman, if you wanted to.
Sure. So, there's no impact on our revenue, but there is a fee to the consumer. And the fee for the football games, things that were a discussion, was less than a dollar. We still would be offering sales on site, it's just another avenue, another opportunity for a parent or a community member to purchase tickets either in advance or a season pass and things. If it's a season pass, it's, you know, there is a savings, it's not ninety-five cents per ticket, it's, you know, a group rate or whatever, but it's, it's definitely, doesn't impact our two, three, or four dollars that we receive in terms of our revenue. It is, there is an impact on the, whoever's purchasing the ticket, and that's a choice. If they, they wanted to come to purchase on site, they certainly can do that. We will have those available. It's just, again, another way to sell tickets, to get fans to come in, and it's an opportunity for them to purchase in advance and season tickets. There's been some interest in, can we both, both purchase all the home games together at once? This is a way to do that, not something we can do on site. And then another thing that was mentioned is, anything that's purchased online reduces the amount of cash we, we manage on site. So, in our larger events, that, that is something that we have as a priority, is just making sure everything is secure and safe, and by purchasing it online, it reduces the amount of cash on site.
One final thing that I do every summer, even though we, the schools are not in session, we don't know the exact pupil count, but we are planning to open in less than three weeks, four weeks, like probably five weeks. So, why don't we publish the approximate students that we are anticipating in each grade? Because if you see the enrollment numbers here, we don't see any enrollment numbers, because I know like in summer, we don't know the exact, but we are planning to open, like, we are planning the bus routes now, we are planning all those kids, iPads, and everything, right? So, why don't we have some projected numbers that we are anticipating? So, this much in like high school, this much in middle school, at least at a high-level ballpark number? So that we know the trend. Are we going to add too many kids this year? At least so far, what we know, or we are decreasing the kids? Or is it like too many people are going out, or too many people are influxing into the town? Because I know that the, the people services, that in the commons, they are working like throughout the summer. So, at least we will have some idea, like at least public will have some idea, so that's my suggestion. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Malam. And that has always, when I was a member of the public, that was a question that I know in the summer I would always come up and ask, and I know that we don't, we don't publish the anticipated enrollment. The enrollment as of September is what gets reported out then to the public in, at the September meeting, if there's anything you want to add about that. Okay. But thank you very much, because that has always been, I know, a question of the public, but the enrollment numbers, we don't post anticipated, we post what the enrollment actually is, and that's in, in the September meeting. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items?
Good evening. Adam Elias, Monroe Township. Congratulations to Gazala, being the new vice president of the board. I know you'll do a tremendous job, and my best wishes to Karen Beerman, who I know served selfishly on the board for a long time, and I wish her the best. Very excited to hear that full day kindergarten was discussed at the most recent meeting. I, I think full day kindergarten, as a parent of three kids under the age of five, my oldest is going into kindergarten this year, I get to talk to a lot of parents of her fellow classmates who are really feeling that burden right now, where costs are high and costs are coming out, more out of pocket for kindergarten. I, I've seriously heard a gambit of parents who are either taking their kids to full day kindergarten where they work in other towns such as Keyport. I've heard of parents that are paying to put their kids in full day kindergarten, you know, maybe in Millstone or Monalpan, I know myself, and putting them in Millstone. I would really like to keep them in Monroe, though, and I really wish that we could take that more seriously. I think it's something, a factor for when families are moving into Monroe, they look at full day kindergarten. I've heard people make comments that advocates of full day kindergarten are just looking for a daycare option, and I think that's really a horrible way to look at it. I think the younger we can get kids into a full day of school, it's been shown to really help them develop a lot better, a lot quicker, and make our district a lot more competitive. So, I'm glad to see that we had a spirited discussion about it. I would just ask that we continue to have that discussion going into, you know, next April, if we're going to have a vote about going above cap. I wonder if when the budget is presented for approval to the county and to the state, I know a big source of pain in Monroe has been lack of equalization aid that we don't have here in Monroe Township, but I know that's been a repeated discussion. We've been trying to get the attention of our legislators to no avail for many years on that note, but I wonder if we included full day kindergarten in the budget, if that would be something that would perhaps spur some additional funding from the state, given that Governor Murphy has put such a big push on putting preschool and, you know, state-funded preschool in many districts. You know, to me, it seems like a bit of a slap in the face that not only do we not have the equalization aid, but we're one of maybe less than ten out of six hundred school districts now in the state that don't even have a full day of kindergarten. I think it's something that we should really take seriously as one of top three. Personally, I would put it as my top one item this year going into the upcoming school year in dealing with the state. The other thing, too, is I want to make a comment about, you know, to the Legislative Committee, it's, well, obviously, I'm a huge, very passionate about being in tune with what goes on, on the state level, in the legislature. It's important that people are also aware what's going on in the Department of Education. You know, Department of Education is not directly tied into the legislature, that's a branch of the executive branch of Governor Murphy's office. A lot of big things going on in the Board of, the State Board of Education that we should also be privy to, so I would urge members of the Board of Education and whoever's on the Legislative Action Committee to also be in tune to what's going on in the State Board of Education, because I know there's a lot of talk about issues in the curriculum that a lot of parents are concerned about and are not really hearing, being spoken to at the meetings. So, with that, I thank you all, as always, for your service and for everything. Have a great night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. First, on behalf of the Monroe Township Recreation Wrestling Program, we want to thank you for giving our students an opportunity to represent our town with great pride as they go on, get out on the mat to meet our competitors, and now they can really go out there and show them what we're made of and not lose our matches, because we're not forfeiting any, so that's amazing. We want to make sure that we're always evening the playing field and just giving them the chance to work hard, show off what they've learned, some of them since they've been doing this since kindergarten, so representing the middle school is a big deal. And for those students at home who want to play a sixth grade sport and haven't done wrestling, we want to see you come to the rec program, come to the middle school program. The sport really, it thrives, the more kids in the room, the better. So, if you want to play sports, come, we want to see you there. And I think this is a great first step in just growing our athletics program in general, so I really am just very excited to see what our town is going to continue to do, so go Falcons. My first question is about the grades and what you guys were talking about with the final exams. Have we ever curved final exams? I know that we do that at the college level. Is that something you can do at a high school level or no?
Dr. Lehman, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, and some, some exams are curved, and that's part of the process as they look deeper into final exams and other assessments as to, you know, what some of the causes may be, what some of the outcomes are. Is it assessment design? Are they taking tests that are similar to the way they're taking tests throughout the year, or is it a different format based on the time constraints of the end of the year, that kind of thing? So, that's certainly, yes, they curve. Some people curve, some people don't. It depends on the course and things like that, but it's, it's definitely something, a part of the deeper discussion that we'll get into.
Okay, great. I thought that would be something that might be helpful also, because I know at the college level, lots of us had curved grades, and that's how some of us passed. So, for the letter writing committee, I just had a question about the timeframe as to when we are thinking of having those ready to be able to do. I know we've talked about it a few times in some of the meetings, and just wondering, like, what's the deliverable date that we're expecting for that to be ready?
I believe Ms. Fabiana said the, the committee will have a final version of the letter to discuss at their September meeting, and then present it to the board at the board meeting in September, and then following that, it would be uploaded to our website.
And then that's when we can send it out? So, the current one that's there now, should that be used or no? No?
No.
Okay, all right. And just to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Elias was saying about kindergarten, I do agree, I mean, my kids are grown, so we're done with the whole kindergarten process, but I am a huge advocate of kindergarten, full day kindergarten. I think it's really important for our town just being as competitive to other towns around us, and so if we are proposing this question of going over the two percent cap for April, then I think that would be a good question to add as well, just getting that conversation going, because we want to be just as equally competitive as our other towns around us, and it is really important to get these kids into a full day of school at such a young age. And I think that's where that whole conversation about the budget really comes into play, and, you know, in order to be able to do things, we need money, and so if we can't get the state to give us the money, then we're going to have to look from within. So, I think this is a great time to be having that integrated conversation to talk about kindergarten and the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Good evening.
Good evening. Michelle Arminio, Monroe. In terms of the TV usage that you're doing some research on, what timeframe are you asking to be researched? Is there a time, a specific timeframe?
We can look over the last six months, we could look over the last year, we could look over the last three years. I'd have to go ahead and have the conversation. I've asked Mr. Maralta to work directly with Mr., I'm going to say Boris. Maybe Mr. Gladock to, Mr. Gladock to look at that, but we could definitely, and I think I understand what you're saying, we're not going to just say the last sixty days. We definitely need to have a decent amount of time so that people do go on vacation, people come back, and we want to make sure that we have an accurate amount of time to look at, to see if it's being used.
Well, I think more importantly, as Mr. Stefano said previously, it's been dark for a long time, so you need to, you need to look at prior to it stopping, because clearly then the data will be skewed. So, I would ask that you find out what, when it actually stopped being visible and go from there, and maybe Mr. Payne can talk to the person at the senior center and maybe take a small, maybe unofficial poll as to whether the seniors use that or not, because I think a lot of them do. So, those are two areas that I think should be researched, but to say in the last sixty days, I don't think it's been available for the last few months, or six months, or whatever. So, so please, you know, count it when it was fully operational before you take calculations[1787.29] and data from that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to agenda items? Good evening.
Good evening, Vanessa Forrest, Monroe Township. I just have a question about the, I know the referendum fails, all that, now, we're talking about the 2% cap. Is the kindergarten, you know, addressing the kindergarten issues, that can be part of the reason why we're asking to increase over the 2%? Or is it just because of the baseline, whatever, we're working with now?
So currently, the decision was made to go over 2%, and that was due to need to continue our programs, to not remove any programs, and to also grow the appropriate programs, so that our children don't lag behind in any area. So that goes, that was a necessity, without even the conversation about kindergarten. Kindergarten is a very valuable conversation that we need to add to, as well. So the 2% cap, it would be twofold. One, for sure, the need to go above the 2%, once again, to keep our programs that are very enriched, and continue them, and grow them, and then also, to have the conversation, and to look at the needs for kindergarten. A lot of our concerns is really about room.
Right.
It's about location. We already started having the conversation specifically, building by building, if we were to have kindergarten, where would we need to add on? If we were to have kindergarten, what classrooms would we utilize? What do you need in a classroom, as per the state requirement? A bathroom. Things that are a little bit different than the current regular structure. So we started to already have in-depth conversations, and the conversation is going to continue. So I, I think I answered your question.
So that would be part of what you're going to use to kind of influence the, the public to get over the 2% cap?
So what-
That could be something, you know, that would be included in that discussion.
Well, what we will do is, we are already going to be over the 2% cap, with the need of, with our needs, and then, we're going to have the conversation, and then make a recommendation to the board. Once we have that conversation, we work with Ms. Allen. We just started our process, we are doing our process a little bit earlier this year, which we're very glad about. So we're getting, we're moving along, what we need to do, and how it works, through the different protocols and procedures regarding budget defense rounds. So we are moving it up by almost 45 days, 30 to 45 days, and then the conversation of whether or not kindergarten is something that we can even put in there, due to what it would look like with building needs, and-
Right. Is that something that you're going to address with the legislature? Is that going to be part of all that? Or no, that's a separate kind of-
I, I believe that the current conversations that we're having with the legislature, that would be separate. It is appropriate, we can't easily put in there, that we can't even look, to have preschool, which is now the topic of conversation, because we don't have kindergarten. And why don't we have kindergarten? Because we're not adequately funded. So, you know, which comes first? You know, we, we have to, we can't, you know, we can't even, we can't run, because we're crawling, basically, as far as the funding that's provided to, to this district. So that, that's a very good question, though.
Yeah, yeah, because we've already gone through the budget, and tried to cut the fat, as we, right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is a Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. So, real quick, I just wanted to congratulate and thank all the staff, and I know you're going to talk about summer programs a little bit, too, but that worked our summer programs. Some of them are wrapping up right now, some of our enrichment programs will continue for the next few weeks, but we, we, and we'll have a full, kind of, after-action report coming up in the next month or two, but we engaged probably close to 1,000 students in various activities throughout the summer. We employed many, many staff members. So it's an outstanding activity, outstanding way to engage our students through the summer, and I just want to thank the staff, the students, the parents who participated. This is the inaugural year, where some of our programs were fee-based, as opposed to grant-funded, so we'll have a debrief as to, you know, how everything played out financially, and, you know, we'll take a look and project what, what things could look like for next year, what we'll tweak, what we can add. You know, a lot of our programs are 60-hour focused, maybe we pivot to 120-hour piece. We'll take a look at that, but, you know, overall, I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated, whether it was staffing, parents, anybody who participated, engaged, all our custodians, who worked around, and their normal cleaning routines and things, all the classes we had this summer, so, and that's it. Thank you.
Right, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lehman? Right? The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
Good evening, everyone, happy summer. It still is summer, we're not, we're not, we're not letting that go just yet. I want to thank Dr. Lehman for giving me a perfect transition segue into some specifics about the summer programs. So the Monroe Township School District Summer Session 3 is winding down, and officially concludes next week, with our final session of the Summer of STEM. This year, Monroe Township School District Summer introduced two new programs, one in Computer Science and Robotics, a new culinary arts enrichment program, and a brand-new ceramics and sculpture course. In addition, we added a second session of musical theater, and increased our overall presence with our extended school-year program. Just to echo what he said, we want to thank all of our students that joined us this summer, a special thank you to our staff, student volunteers, that were fabulous in all aspects of our program, and of course, we have to always thank our parents, because you're the ones that bring our children, and you're the ones that realize the need to give as much time and well-roundedness to our children during the summer months. So it was a very successful program. I would like to start off, before I talk about a one-retirement, and then I will go through my approvals. I do want to thank the leadership staff, we have a lot of our administrators present in the back, I want to thank them for coming, and I do want to give a shout-out to them. Ms. Bora did place some emphasis on the change that we had today. We are working very, very diligently to bring the best candidates as our new hires to the district, working up until the very last moment. Our agenda is full in that area. We are confident in the people that we have, we have recommended. I personally interview all of the applicants, and I think it's very important that we are not about just filling a position. We are about bringing the best, and hiring the best in our district, and that is what we want to do. We have some fabulous applicants that have come through to us, and wonderful hires, we're very excited about that. We're looking forward to another great start of the school year. It is very exciting. September is around the corner, it's still the summer, but September is around the corner. So, on that note, it's just a very exciting time of year. We have only one retirement, Ms. Nadia Mancuso, who is a special education teacher at Brookside. We would like to thank her and commend her for her 30 years of service. Really exceptional, many of you may know her, I happen to know her as well. She has done an incredible job, teaching our children, and really aspiring the children to the highest level. We wish her well. Once again, I always use the same, the same comment about flying happily like a falcon. We wish her well in her next journey, whatever that might be. And on that note, I will get right to my approvals. For personnel, 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through AN. Is it Nancy?
We get a motion to approve?
Motion?
I think, or second?
Shouldn't, should it be A through AL?
Oh, I have AN.
Okay, did you see how many times we changed it? See, you also have AN. Okay. A through AL. One more addition, thank you very much.
Motion?
Motion? Second?
Okay.
Mine is right.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Chanley?
I have just one.
Sure. Ms. Alvarez?
All right. Can you just explain a little bit, what is, what entails the high school after-school cafeteria supervision?
Absolutely. It's funny, I just had this conversation today with Dr. Higgins. So we have an opportunity at the high school, that for children who need to remain after school, for various different activities, but then take the late bus home, they have an opportunity to go into the cafeteria environment, where they have a certificated staff member, who's able to remain there. It's an opportunity to do homework, it's an opportunity to get caught up with any type of work that they may need to do, and it allows us to provide a safe environment, where they can remain until they take the late bus home.
Do we get a lot of students going, attending?
At times, we get a tremendous amount of students, and at times, we don't. If you'll notice, that the second session no longer has more than one employee for the approval, it only has one. Why? Because they do an analysis, and they see, we don't need more than one teacher there, so now we only have one. And it's, it changes on an as-needed basis. I've had the conversation with Dr. Higgins, he keeps a really good eye on what our needs are, so that we make sure that we have the right amount of individuals there, to make sure that we don't have too many, and make sure that we have enough when needed.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does anybody have any other questions? I actually have one, Mrs. Chanley, if I could ask. On Letter P, the C-Mac at the high school?
Sure.
Where it says, "Two teachers for one hour per day, for 144 days." I'm assuming the 144 days is, it's not 180 for the, because of the half-days?
Correct. So 144 days would be the actual days, that there would be the teacher present to work with the children, after the school day is over. So that would be correct.
Okay, so that would be almost, pretty much, every single day?
Correct.
Minus the half-days. There's five listed there, and I know, from experience, last year, there were several days where C-Mac was not open. Do we, does the high school have a schedule, it says, on a rotating basis, two staff members should be there? Do we know what will occur those days, if these staff members do not pick up the, the role of attending C-Mac?
The staff member, not the child.
The staff member.
So what happens is, when they approve this many teachers, it gives an opportunity for one of the teachers to rotate out. So for example, I believe it's one of the assistant principals, I'm looking towards Dr. Higgins, but it's my understanding that it's one of the assistant principals that writes the schedule, and then they reach out to the teachers to make sure that they're available, and if they're not, the schedule could go to another individual. If at any time, there was a problem where no one is available, I would have to have a conversation with Dr. Higgins, if he wanted to institute something we did at the middle school, where we had substitute teachers. They would, then it needs to be board-approved, and only be utilized when those members who are, who are currently being approved, were not available, and I'd be happy to do that. That is something that we did at the middle school, we had this issue.
All right, I would, if we-
Absolutely.
If we could look into that, that would be great, because if it's, if the students should have C-Mac available to them for 144 days, it should really, that is a huge-
Great program.
Program for them, after-school math help.
Absolutely.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes, no to AE.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
So it is recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, that the board approve the following personnel items, AM and AN, specifically AN, that position is a position that no one accepted, and it would have been a vacant position, so that recommendation is to fill a otherwise vacant position. So that's AM and AN.
Okay. We get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Under Personnel Items for a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items AO through BY.
Motion?
Second.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, that the board approve the following certificated staff at the following step-on guide, Letter BZ.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions for Dr. Lehman? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Under Board Action for a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through M.
Motion?
Is it a second? Is it a second?
Yes.
All right, motion by Ms. Bora, seconded by Ms. Belko. Are there any questions?
I, I make a motion that the board suspend Bylaw 0131, and adopt new policy and Regulation 164201, and revise Policy 2419, and new Regulation 2419 with only one reading, based on recently-approved sick leave legislation that is effective immediately, and recent New Jersey Department of Education guidance provided to school districts that is effective September, September 1.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to suspend the bylaw, where we need two readings of a policy. It was recommended to have, to move that policy with one reading. That's a motion on the floor.
And I just want to clarify, the policies are the sick leave and the school threat assessment team, the grading system is still on for first read.
Wait, what are we doing?
So normally, a policy needs two readings to change.
She wants to make it one reading?
One reading. It came through Strauss, as May recommended, that boards do it at, with one reading, so that it's set in place for September? You second the motion?
I second the motion, absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All right, so this is-
I just want to comment that it's a mandatory policy.
Yes.
It's not like we could change anything with a second reading.
It's already-
So it makes perfect sense to-
Right, it's a new law, and it's mandated, and it's starting September 1 for one, and the other one already is effective.
So this would be a vote on the motion to table our bylaw, 01-
To suspend.
To suspend, yes, sorry.
And is that a temporary suspend?
Yes, just for the-
Just for those two items.
Yes. Ms. Allen, okay, we have a roll call?
Yes, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, for a nine-member vote and Board Action vote-
We have to vote on the rest of the motion. Yes, just to table.
To table.
Now, do we have a motion to-
There's a vote to suspend the policy requiring two readings. So now, you're going to vote on the actual change to the policy.
I had a comment for-
Okay, we need a motion to, did we do?
We already have a-
We already have it.
This was a friendly amendment motion, so we have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor, yeah.
I had a comment on item H, just for public knowledge, because there is a change on the school calendar. I wanted to, you know, put it out there that the change is June 19th is now going to be a four-hour session for the staff members as well, because it does not clearly say so in the agenda. I wanted to put it out there that it's a half-day for the students originally, and now it's going to be a half-day for our staff members as well. Just wanted to put that comment out there, yes, thank you.
May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, under Board Action, nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action items N through S.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to just wish everybody a wonderful remainder of the summer. Be safe and enjoy what time we have. And then, the next time we see one another, it'll be a wonderful beginning of the school year for all of our staff, students, and our parents. So enjoy the remainder of your summer, thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
The next item on our agenda is our Business Administrator's report. Ms. Allen?
Yes, it was recommended that Board Action items A through L be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion? Second. Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Allen?
I just have a quick one, it might be a stupid question, but I, is that in-person choreography? Because I noticed their address is Texas. Or is it virtual? The National Cheerleaders Association? The choreography?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's in-person.
It's just the main company is located in Texas, okay.
It's in-person.
Are there any other questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes, but no to I and L.
Okay, Ms. DePain?
Yes, but I recuse on myself attending a workshop at the School Boards Convention.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes, I have seen on the bill list the check. I cannot recall the exact check number.
I know, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and motion passes.
And yes to the rest.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
It is recommended that Board Action item M be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All right, are there any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
The motion passes. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Board President's report. I want to start off by saying that I regretfully accepted Karen Bierman's resignation. I wish her all the best and well going forward. I had the great pleasure of meeting Karen when we ran for the Board of Education together, and she has become a very good friend of mine, and she was a very exceptional colleague here on the board. She always did her due diligence and made sure she was ready for every committee meeting and every Board of Education meeting, and I'm going to sincerely miss her and her dedication here to the board. Again, I want to wish her well and thank her on behalf of the board for all the service that she did to our community and to our school district. As the new school year approaches, I want to welcome back all returning staff and extend a warm welcome to all of our new staff joining our district. We are very fortunate here in Monroe that we are not experiencing staff shortages that other districts are as they begin the school year. I have to share that in some of the personnel meetings, the board is updated on interviews, and it is incredible to hear some of the stories of candidates who choose to come to Monroe over other high-paying districts because they want to teach here in Monroe Township. It says a lot about our district. I want to wish all of our students and families a great school year with much success. It is not easy coming back from summer vacation, but I know our schools are ready for the return of our students. Lastly, one of the things that has been coming up before the board for the last several years is polling places for elections. It came up recently as the town had requested to move a polling place from one school to another. This sparked conversations about our polling places in our schools with our administration and some members of the board. I know board members, as well as district administration, would like to move polling out of our schools. Administration, as well as I, have requested a meeting with the township officials to discuss alternatives to using our schools, such as the senior center, firehouses, and other polling locations currently used. I was told by the town that we would need to call the County Board of Elections, which I did, and I had a very pleasant conversation with the gentleman over there at the Board County of Elections, and told me the request needed to come from our township clerk. I then reached back out to our township clerk and requested a meeting. I followed up the request with Mayor Delina and explained that the district would like to have this conversation now rather than waiting for the November election. Our schools are closed in November on Election Day, so we are not looking to make any changes for November. However, we have, in 2024, we have primary elections coming up, as well as our board vote for our budget and Board of Ed member elections. So I know the township clerk, I was told by Mayor Delina, is on vacation, and he is going to pass that request again to have a meeting set up now rather than later, because there is a process in place where the township has to make the request to the Board of Elections. Then the Board of Elections takes the request to their board commissioners, the commissioner of elections, they have a board, and then they have to evaluate that and see if they would like to approve that. So I know Mrs. Chanley has that on her schedule of things to speak with and the town when we have our meetings, and we'll keep everybody informed of where that moves forward. And that concludes my report. The next item on our agenda is other Board of Education business. Ms. Belko?
I just want to piggyback on Karen. The three of us ran together and made some friends that I didn't think I would make, and Karen made me a better board member by her diligence in making sure that she dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and really did a deep dive into every month, making sure things are going to- so as I step into the chairmanship of the Finance Committee, not really a big deal, but I hope I can do her service as a service by, you know, following in her footsteps. And I really am going to miss her. As a board member, she was somebody who kept an even head, kept her cool, and stood by her convictions. And so, you know, I hope I can continue to do that in my last year as a board member. So I just want to say that, thank you so much, Karen, for everything that you taught me, and thank you for being a board member. And I'm going to miss you.
Ms. Bora?
I'm going to piggyback on that and say I'm going to steal one of your lines, because that completely encapsulates what I wanted to say, that Karen really did make me a better board member, too. I learned a lot from her in the last year and a half. We were not always on the same side of some votes. We would vote differently, but I would see the argument from her perspective because of the due diligence that she did, the point, the arguments that she brought to the table. And so, I will personally miss that guidance, that encouragement to dot the i's and cross the t's and ask the tough questions. I learned that from Karen, and I wish her luck and much less stressful life going forward. But she'll be missed, and no offense to you, but I will really miss the Finance Committee reports that Karen put forward. Her reports were the best. In all these years of listening to, you know, our Board of Ed meetings, I felt like her, when she took on as the Chair of Finance Committee, the reports were beautifully detailed. She didn't say her number wrong ever. She knew her facts when she was questioned, so I'll always be apprec- I think she leaves big shoes to fill. She leaves, no disrespect to you, she leaves big shoes to fill for the next Finance Committee Chair. But I wish her the best in the future, and I'm really sad that she's not going to be part of this board, and I hope that I can do justice to her leadership positions for the next few months, up until April. And, as I said, thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Yeah, I also wanted to actually ditto everything you said. When I put in my request for committees in the beginning of the year, I listed finance as my last choice. Because my husband does all the bills, and I don't want to do anything with finance. And very nicely, Ms. Gerby put me on finance. And you know what? I'm very grateful that she did because of Karen's skillfulness, the way she conducted the meetings, and like Gazella said, we often didn't agree with things. She explained things very well, because being a novice with finance, I really appreciated. She was very detail-oriented. She was very courteous to all the members of the Finance Committee, and I have to say, I did learn a lot from her in the last six months.
And I think you're an excellent board member on finance.
Thank goodness I wasn't the next position. Then you wouldn't be saying that.
Does anybody have anything else?
I have one more thing to say. I just also wanted to, I have two children that are teachers, and I just hope you enjoy the rest of your vacation, because I know their minds and your minds are already on the agenda that's going to happen for the students here for the next full year. So it's just like you don't stop. The teachers are constantly, constantly thinking and learning so that they can bring everything to the students here, especially in Monroe. It's a shame that this country and, I don't know where else, we should be revering our teachers and holding them up on a pedestal for what they have to go through with regulations and things that come out from up above that don't know anything about teaching at this level to children. So I want to thank you personally. I mean, I hear it from my children, the complaints every day. My one daughter calls me the same time every day. And I'm like, okay. So, and my son, thank God, boys don't say anything, so it's nice that way. But she calls me the same time every day, and she'll start out with like, I'll have to say what's going on, and then she gets into it. And I'm like, oh, okay. So I have to kind of like, you know, even her out and give her a pat on the back on the phone. But, I mean, they've both been teaching for, in their 20-some years, and boy, do I give you all a lot of credit. You deserve all the money in the world. I think I saw it on Facebook today where somebody said, thank a lawyer, thank a doctor, thank an engineer, but don't forget to thank the teacher, because that's where they started, okay? They started with the teacher in kindergarten, pre-K, hopefully kindergarten here. And they didn't get there without that teacher in kindergarten putting them in the right direction. So thank all the teachers, to me, every teacher in this country, in the world, for doing their due diligence for our students. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Chanley, sure.
I just wanted to take an opportunity, of course, to wish Ms. Bierman well. I had the pleasure of working alongside of her in my role as acting, and then my role as a permanent superintendent gave me great guidance. There's no one that can do finance like her, absolutely. But I didn't want to be remiss without, I did thank a lot of the leadership, and of course, we always have to thank our parents and our staff. But I'd like to give a specific shout-out to our maintenance and custodians. They work tirelessly all year long. So when we all are excited and our staff members, you know, some of them do extended school year, and some of them do summer programs, but the maintenance, the custodial department, along with the secretaries that are 12-month, never stop. They truly never stop. As soon as they get to finish cleanup from one area, they have to go to the next area, and it never ends. So I just wanted to individually, not to say everybody isn't important, because we all are, but I wanted to just acknowledge our custodial maintenance and our 12-month secretaries who are, you know, they're the backbone in addition to our teachers and our administrators, because they make sure that we have a clean and safe environment for our children. So I just wanted to say that. And Karen, all the best. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to, basically, same sentiments. And I will say that when I first on this board, I thought Karen was going to be like the most difficult one to get along with, and ended up really liking her and working well with her. So, yeah, I thought she would be a little harder to, you know, personality-wise, but she ended up being a great, really great board member, and I wish her well, and she's definitely going to be missed.
She does give that air, huh?
She does.
Like I've got a wall around me.
A little scared.
But then you understand that, it's nothing like that.
And her magic bag. Does anybody have anything else? All right, seeing none, our next item on the agenda is our public forum. If anybody wants to come and address the board, you have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality. Good evening.
Adam Durando, Monroe Township. Just here to introduce myself, I'm running for council in town. Looking forward to working with the school board if I am elected. Sentiments to the teachers, my wife is a teacher, and I'm going through summer teacher brain at this point. So I understand what goes on, she's in a local district around here. So school board's a little near and dear. I do attend other meetings in other districts, and especially hers. So understand a little bit what's going on with the school boards in Monroe. Also, I don't know if the policy change has been put into place, the 130 to 120 credits for the high school graduation? I heard that on the, is that in place? Okay, so I'm a Monroe graduate myself, and when I was in school, credit requirement was 115 credits, and that gave me the ability to go out to, and get a job after school, early release. And I was able to basically start my career in senior year of high school. So I missed my senior summer, but that program allowed me to get out of it. I think it's great to give that opportunity to children to get out and do stuff like that. So it really helped me out. And that's all I have. Thank you, thank you for your service, and look forward to working with you in the near future.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Michelle Arminio, Monroe. Gazella, congratulations, yes, of course, and to Karen, I was, good luck, Karen, and I'm sorry you're leaving so early, but understandable if that is your need. I have three questions that I'd like to get through. First, with the online ticket sales platform, I was a little bit disappointed that this was on the agenda. I know you wanted to get this going for the school year. But I did attend the Finance Committee meeting, and I thought there were questions left unanswered, and some of the board members asked for more detail for an online security feature. I don't know if that was answered, so again, you know, there was no deliberation or discussion at this meeting with the full board members. You can correct me if I was wrong, but my recollection and notes say that there were only three people at the Finance Committee meeting. So like I said, I think there are things that go unanswered. Were there more? I might be mistaken. There were four people? Okay. There's the ability to have five, so we don't have alternates. This most recent policy does not include alternates. I would recommend that the Policy Committee take a look at putting alternates in. So if there is a vacancy, you can have up to five members at a committee meeting. I think that gives a broader, you know, for broader information and broader deliberation. So I, and this online sales platform may be the best thing going, but again, I don't think it was vetted properly or enough, so I was a little disappointed that that was there. The special revenue, page 37 of 39M, middle grades, career awareness, is that for school, is that for grades lower than high school? Okay, so that was a nine-member vote, and with all due respect, was Ms. Scott supposed to vote on that? Because I think she did.
No.
No, okay, sorry, I thought that I heard you say yes to that resolution. Okay, my mistake, and I apologize, but I would ask you to just correct that.
I always pay attention where it says 9 to 10, and I never vote or overset my bounds of my seat.
No, and I'm not suggesting it, like I said, it is not meant to be derogatory or dismissive. I just, I tried to listen, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize. And my third, oh, is there going to be a closed-session resolution at the next, the next portion?
No, we do not require a closed session.
Because if, it has, it has started to be that closed-session resolution is the last one, may or may not be on the agenda. And I would ask if there is going to be a close, a second closed session that the language of the resolution is on the agenda. So that would just be my consideration. Since it's not, I thank you very much. And again, Ms. Scott, please don't take it personally. I'm just trying to review, you know, governmental protocol. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think our Business Administrator does a great job, our Board Secretary, of calling the role appropriate for nine-member and 10-member votes. In regards, in regards to the deliberations, board members do get the agenda ahead of time. They are open to watch the recorded board meetings, and they are welcome to ask administration, Ms. Allen, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Chanley, prior to the board meeting if they have any questions on anything that is on the agenda. So, I do believe that our board does do its due diligence when they're going to vote and things are properly vetted and voted for. And lastly was the... Oh, the closed session. That is written in accordance with our board attorney. We have to put the language in there by law and advertise what a closed session may or may not be needed for. It does say on there, if needed, we do not know if it is going to be needed until we attend the first closed session forum. And depending on the items and the discussion that we have and the length that we need to discuss certain things, we don't know until the first closed session ends if we're going to need a second closed session. Because we have made a commitment, I know tonight we were about five, six minutes late, but we have made a commitment that we will start at 6:30 and end our closed session at 7:15 to be respectful to the public. So that's why we do have to, by law, have the second closed session listed that way on the agenda to give the public the opportunity to know what we may be speaking about in that closed session as well. Good evening, Mr. Gunkelman.
George Gunkelman, Five Picnic Court, Monroe. Regarding the, the first reading on the grade, grading weight changes. Apparently, from what I was hearing tonight, is it proposing to move it from 16% to 12%? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't see that that's really going in the right direction. You know, particularly the AP kids are going to go on to college where their final may well be 50% of their course. You know, and the idea that somehow people are being hurt when they're being measured as to what they retained for the year. I think the measure of education is what you retain. So, it, to me, it seems like we're going in the wrong direction. There was a lot of conversation about it this evening and talking about, you know, all the things that needed to be looked in, to analyze. But nevertheless, we've already decided, apparently, at least on a first reading basis, to move ahead to reduce it. So, you know, very nice that we're going to study it, but we've already started to make a decision independent of that study. I would hope it'd be looked at a little bit more seriously. It's, it's not, you know, what you retain, what you can do on your final exam is a measure of what you retain. That you manage to cram well for previous tests over a short period doesn't mean that you've retained it. Some of the kids, not very many, a few will go to colleges that they have a comprehensive at the end of four years before they can graduate. I, you know, reducing it doesn't seem to be going in the wrong direction other than a lot of feel-good's and maybe the appearance to people that are evaluating us on grades will go up. The other thing I'd like to say is that Building and Grounds didn't talk about very many things tonight. I didn't listen to the meeting, but nothing about Applegard and the roofing of that. I'm curious as to what's the status of that and where we're going with it. I would like to suggest, and I've talked to Jerry about it some time ago, Jerry Teague, that when we go out to do something, we look at the possibility of doing design build, combining the contract and the design together. The number that I heard thrown out at a municipal council meeting for the design work for a roof replacement on Applegard was a very big number. And, you know, I spent a lot of my career in, in commercial building and that number is, is out of line. And we would have always bid that as a design bill and not paid a separate, very large amount. Spam, of course. Sorry. Anyway, I think if the board could talk to Jerry a little bit about maybe looking into design build, we might find some considerable savings there. Lastly, I'd like to ask if we can find out something about legal fees and where we are for the year in our, as the budget. Are we on track or are we over our estimated, or where are we?
Well, thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Gunkelman. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Vadeep Malam, Monroe Township. I have two questions. So, one, regarding the weightage of the final exams. Do we have any Department of Education recommendation on this aspect? The second question, I understand, like, I want to understand, like, why our schools should not be used as polling centers? Anyhow, we are giving a holiday with respect to whether the polling station is there or not. So I would like to understand that part. We might get paid, are, are we getting paid or are we getting...
No.
But usage or anything like that, so.
Mrs. Chanley?
So, a final exam is not even required? So there is no requirement...
The weightage wise, is there any DOE recommendation?
It doesn't, waiting is not even an issue because you don't even need to have a final exam. There are districts that have no final exams. So that answers your first question. And seniors, and if you have an A average and you're a senior, you don't even need to take the fall exam. That's correct, Ms. Scott. Thank you. Regarding the polling, as I've been sitting here over the last, is it two years now? No, it's over two years, I guess. Something like that, whatever it might be. Some of the concerns that came up and a lot of the emails that I've, that I've had from various different parents is always about safety. We do an excellent job. We have a wonderful security, security officers in place. And we manage the buildings appropriately that are polling places by making sure that we have no co-mingling of the outside people that come to vote as well as our children. We do it to the best of our ability. But it's always been a concern that during those times of years, and yes, we are closing November, but we're not closing April during that time. And I believe there's a vote in June, but I'm not sure if we're in school during the June vote. All that being said, we looked and, just from my own opinion, because one thing I really value is parents' concern. So the first year that it came out and we, we had the polling places, I physically went all day long to each polling place myself. Like physically sat in the parking lot, went into the buildings to see what was going on. And what I said to myself and what I noticed is, we have the voting in Oak Tree. Why don't we just move the voting to the senior center? We have the voting in Brookside. Why don't we just move the vote to the firehouses? We have the voting in Mill Lake. I want to just make sure I said the right school. Woodland. Why don't we just move it to the recreation center? Like, we have these other facilities in our township. Why do they have to be in the schools? Because we're always concerned with safety. So, it was a consideration. I reached out to Mr. Teague, who was dealing directly with the electorate from the township. And the person happened to be away. I don't know if she was on vacation or she was actually out. This was previous. And then we waited and then we started having this conversation. We are closing November, so we have a little time. I just happened to get an email from Ms. Reed. And the email said, "Would you be willing to move from Oak Tree..." It was one of the schools to high school. Brookside to the high school. So my response was, "No." Not only do we not want to move it from Brookside to the high school, but we'd like to move it completely out of our schools. And that started the conversation. So, it's not a negative, I mean, I'm all for voting. You know, I think it's very important to teach voting and what it means and our civic responsibilities. It's not that we have a problem with the concept of having a vote, but we have a lot of buildings in this district that can hold the vote where we don't need to worry about our children coming in and out of an entrance or an exit. So that was the rationale between, of why we decided to move forward with possibly getting out of the schools.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Hello, Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. So, my wheels are kind of spinning about this conversation about the grading. And I have some questions. Have we ever polled the students who failed these exams to ask them, what did they find to be an issue with the exam and why they could have potentially failed it? Or if they did fail it, especially if they were A students, right? So I remember that was one of the conversations. And, you know, us adults are so quick to make judgments, yet we're not in their shoes. And I know that the education that my children are receiving now is very different than the education I received or my parents received. And the level of competition and the level of structure and the tutoring and the extra help and all these things that are available to our children, were not once available maybe to us when we were growing up. And it's very different now. So, I think especially for these children who are potentially overachievers, right? They're AP students and they're getting straight As and then they bomb this exam. Well, what went wrong, you know? And I think we have to go straight to these kids and ask them. You know, what did you see, was, was it that you didn't study? Was it that it was more of a critical thinking exam and you were just trying to retain information? Because at the end of the day, we don't want to just memorize, right? We have to be able to apply what we've learned and get an understanding of what it is that we're learning. So I think there has to be maybe, as we keep researching and trying to understand what went wrong and before we decide, I mean, I don't think it's a good thing to judge if we're reducing it to 12%, that may not be a bad thing. It may be a wonderful thing. But maybe that's what we need to do, is just talk to some of these kids and get an understanding of what happened, what went wrong. And then we can make a decision from there. As we do the due diligence of looking into, is it a teaching style? Is it a textbook issue, whatever it may be? And how we got to this problem that we're facing. But I think we do have to go straight to them and see what is it that they need from us as the adults who are running things to make it better for them so that they can achieve their goals.
Well, and I think part of the problem that we discussed in curriculum as well is it's the end of the school year and the students aren't even given back their final exams. They don't even have an opportunity to look at it and see what they've done wrong to understand why they've gotten the grade.
Or they even notified until maybe the last day of school that they failed it, so.
Exactly.
But is it something that could be like, even if it's a Google Doc that's sent to them with some couple of questions and an email? Or on Genesis, if it's a form they could fill out, you know? Because they find out that they failed it, right? Did they get some notification? Again, I don't have kids in high schools. I'm not there yet. But how do they know that they failed it?
It's at the end of the year.
Yeah, they're great.
The last day of school.
So it's, it's on there. So, is there some way that we can have them fill out a form and just say like...
But the point is, how would they even know why they did if they're, if they're not getting their test spec? And that was one of, that was one of the concerns that was brought up. And I know that the administration, Dr. Lehman and Mrs. Chanley and the supervisors, as well as Dr. Higgins, said they would do a deep dive into it. And perhaps this is something that they, they look into potentially, going back to the students that failed last year. Absolutely. But that's part of the problem is that these students that fail don't know. And I have to say, I know we as board members on graduation day received emails from parents that were very upset. They had no idea their child was in jeopardy of failing. They failed the final exam and now they were not going to be able to walk at graduation. And they found out that day or the day before. And the policy is, if you do not pass, you cannot walk.
But that's passing the class, right? Not the test. So if they failed and they potentially failed the class, then they couldn't walk?
They couldn't walk at graduation regardless of if they were going to sign up to take summer, summer school to pass the test. Credit completion. And, you know, I've, I've, we've brought this up before and potentially we could look at the policy and have those discussions as well. Because it's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts in it and obviously, we want to see our students be as successful as they can. So, that is why this came up to the curriculum committee because we as board members want to understand why we're seeing this in, in our district and, and to improve it and to give the administration the support and the tools to fix it for our students.
Because it's not just seniors. This is collectively amongst the four years.
Yes.
Okay.
It was 2,300 failed final exams across the entire high school.
Yeah.
Dr. Lehman?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. One of the first things when we started to dig into, prepare for the curriculum committee meeting, we talked about even getting deeper and looking into it was getting feedback from the students. So that was, is an intent of the group that's going to kind of review this and dig deep because there's the, their, I guess, their feedback on what the test was like, but there's also a social, emotional side of this. And that's, you know, their mental health and things like that. So, we want to know where they stand and how we can, you know, make the assessment meaningful and representative of what their knowledge is over the course of a year. Or in some cases, if it's a quarterly assessment or something like that. As Ms. Chanley said, there's, there's no DOE dictated waiting, grading...
What requirement?
Policy or anything like that. So, in our research, you see waitings from everything from 10% to 12%. You see districts with no finals. You see districts with quarterly benchmarks. It's all over the place. Some districts do it all the same for every content area. Some districts take a look and say, in certain content areas, this type of assessment makes sense. In certain contacted, content areas, maybe a performance-based piece makes more sense. Because you can't represent your year-long worth of knowledge in a two-hour exam if you're going to construct something or make something or, or present something. So, that's what we will be looking at in terms of, do the assessments reflect what we want to see in the end game at the end of the year for cumulative knowledge, right? Some courses build upon themselves throughout the year. Some have very segmented content that at the end of the year, you see it, but you learned it in the first marking period. So, that's what we mean by taking a deeper dive. Where, where is the cross-section and where, where do we need to take a look? And potentially tweak things. It may or may not be the waiting side of things. It just may be how we execute it, right? Maybe the, the finals have to be given outside of a two-hour window, right? Maybe the two hours in the last four days of school isn't the appropriate avenue to, to administer a final because the final takes longer to grade and we don't have time to get everything done by the end of the calendar. That's not an excuse to not give an assessment that is designed the right way.
Sure.
So, those are all the things that we can take a deeper dive in. And we will be and we are. The data's already being pulled, pulled by Dr. Higgins. So, that's kind of where we're heading in terms of finals specifically. But that leads us into broader grading, broader assessment design along the way. So, it's a, it's a hefty project and we're already making progress.
And I applaud you for it and I think it's really important. And I, the reason I even just come up here is because, you know, everyone really likes to get emotional. And I see that a lot, especially on Facebook. There's a lot of, you know, just emotional posts without really fully understanding the gravity of all of it. And I think that's really important. Like, I, I think you did an amazing job just explaining everything right now in saying that you don't have to give a final exam at all, you know? And what we choose to do as a district is, at the end of the day, we're trying to put out into the world smart, educated, strong, young people who are going to one day be taking care of the rest of us. And so, I think that's really important. And relaying these messages, especially at these meetings and hopefully the people at home are listening and watching because the flying emotions that you see a lot of, I just don't think bodes well for our community. And that's why, you know, I wanted to come up here and kind of talk about, a little bit more about this. Because I, I think we have to take a step back and think, what's the best situation for our kids?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. We do not need to have the closed session. So, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on... September 20th at 6:30 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you and have a good night. We are adjourned.